Get my mic on. Let's go ahead and come to order. All right, moving into PZ-25-009. Ms. Edgar, would you be so good as to read the docket?
Docket PZ-25-009, an application has been filed by Catherine McBride for a waiver of vehicular use landscape area and a waiver of parking regulations for a property located at 1222 Cliffwood Drive, Goshen. The property is four acres in Zoned R2 Residential District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Ms. Barge, you'll have staff's presentation.
Yes, good morning. I'm going to go a little out of order. In front of you today, we have the letters of support that were submitted by the applicant. And on the very last page, there is a map in color that they made referencing the red dots of where the letters of support came from. They didn't have their actual physical address and just had the road. They put a red dot on the road. This was something that was requested at Board of Adjustments, so the applicant went ahead and did that. There's about 40 letters of support for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Barge.
Yes. So this is a waiver of the vehicular use landscape buffer area and waiver of the minimum parking regulations for 1222 Cliffwood Drive and Goshen. And they filed this waiver, and the property is Zoned R2 Residential, which it's currently a vacant swim club facility. The applicant bought the property just this year, and it's 4.27 acres. So this is the parcel being considered outlined in red. It is Zoned R2 along with the subdivisions surrounding it. Every lot is Zoned R2 Residential. So before the current applicant bought the property, there were four nuisance cases opened on this property. The first case was in 2018, second in 2021, third in 2022, and fourth in 2024. And I've included some photos from that. Additionally, on Thursday of last week, so that was March 20th, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved a conditional use permit to allow the private club an R2 zoning. So this property was built before conditional use permits were really a thing. And so because this has ceased in operation for about eight to 10 years, and as a new owner, they went through the process to get that conditional use permit for the private club. The conditions of approval include that the conditional use permit shall only apply for the application considered at the March 20th, 2025 Oldham County Board of Adjustments public hearing. And in order to continue with this process, that they must obtain the appropriate waivers to the Planning Commission, which is why they're here today, and that there should be no on-street parking due to events at the facility. So this is the photos from the 2021 code enforcement case. The building got pretty dilapidated. There was also some issues with gates being opened for the pool access. And then over the years, there was also a nuisance complaint from the Health Department because there was uncirculated water causing potential mosquito problems. So the agenda was posted to the website on February 27, 2025, with adjoining property owner notices mailed on March 5, 2025, and the public notice appeared in the Oldham era on March 13 of 2025. And this was also heard at the Oldham County Board of Adjustments, like I said earlier, on March 20, 2025. So it was formerly a private clubhouse that included pools, tennis courts, and other recreational opportunities. And it's been vacant for about eight to 10 years, which has caused the property to be in disrepair, resulting in those four code enforcement violations before the current applicant purchased it, which was, I believe, in January. And then the applicant would like to use the property as a private swim club. So this is the zoning requirements for R2 Residential, for the setbacks and the lot width and all that. So on March 20, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved the conditional use permit to allow the private club use in R2 zoning. So number four, we're going to make a little adjustment to. So the applicant is asking for a waiver of the vehicular land use buffer area. They're actually asking for the waiver of the height, which is three feet, not the 10-foot width. And that's just so that they don't have plants blocking their view of in and out of the parking lot because they feel like that's a safety concern. And so they want to support security and making sure that people that aren't supposed to be there are not in the parking lot. And they can go into more detail on that. So they're actually, the applicant's going to reference a different regulation within Division 300. It's a different part. It's not the width, but it's the height, that three feet in height. So according to the Oldham County Comprehensive Ordinance, 280-060, clubhouses should have a minimum of 1.0 space for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. And then, if they have a pool, there's an additional one space for each 100 square feet of water area. So based on those calculations, which are on the big plan that was provided to you, on the right side, there's some calculations there, they should have 68 spaces. The proposed number of spaces is 50. They just don't want to add any additional impervious surface as what was there previous when this property was built sometime between the late 50s and the early 70s. The proposed number of parking spaces is 50. The applicant is including 15 spaces for bicycle parking to allow for alternatives because the idea for this is for local residents to use this that are in the surrounding neighborhoods. So here is that requirement, that calculation that I just outlined for you. For clubhouses and community centers with the pools, they need that one space for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. And then with pools, that additional one space for each 100 square feet of water area. I also just included the general regulations for public and private clubs, including swimming, tennis, or other recreation down below, just so that you're aware of the regulations that they are already planning on following. So this is the Google Street View from November of 2024. You can see by the fall leaves. And then also, the applicant provided some photos. You can see the disrepair that the structure is in now. And the applicant is hoping to remodel this and make it into usable facility for the local residents. So this is the plan provided to you today. The more details are in that large plan that I provided you all. So this is where there's going to be that change. So in summary, the minimum size is going to be required is that three-feet height. Trying to do three feet. Anyway, the proposed height size is zero feet with the waiver request of being that three feet. And then the conditions of approval is approval applies only to the plan presented at the March 25, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. And then for the second waiver is that waiver of the minimum parking regulations. They're required to have 68. They're asking for 50 parking spaces. So their waiver is that 18 parking spaces. And again, the potential condition of approval is the waiver shall only apply to the plan presented at the March 25, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barge. Anything else from staff? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Excuse me. Jim Sullivan, Oldham County Engineer, 100 West Jefferson Street. This case is unique in that I really get to wear the two, or two of the hats that I wear around here, which is a stormwater management administrator and also road engineer. And I say that because when we're talking about the parking waiver request, I appreciate the applicant's intent of the parking waiver, which is to reduce the impervious surface. And because we know how that directly impacts stormwater. And of course, we will be reviewing this in the future for construction plans, if it's reviewed, for the stormwater detention for the impervious surface. And they've indicated a proposed detention area. It's also unique in that the splash pad that is proposed as potential, we would actually review that with a more, I'll say stringent Kentucky Division of Water Coordination because splash pads, we've reviewed two recently, Maples Park and Springs Park here in La Grange. And the Division of Water is more concerned with dechlorination of that water because it leaves the pad specifically. But that's really not what we're talking about, right? We're talking about waivers. And the alternative side of that, while I said I appreciate the attention to the impervious versus pervious surface, but also we're concerned about with that reduction of parking, how does that affect the traffic in the area? And we don't want off-street parking on these neighborhood roads. So I believe that's been addressed by the conditional use permit that was approved a few days ago, correct, which carried a requirement that there would be no on-street parking off the site. So I think that's been addressed with that, and we would just have to deal with that from a code enforcement standpoint in the future. I think that has it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from staff? Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to add something real quick. And Jim Sullivan just brought it up, a little bit of the talk behind the parking requirement. And there was talk early on about all of the different types of events that this facility might have. And I want to bring this up in hopes that the council or the applicant are gunwilling to address this. But one of the things that they did mention possibly having was, you know, potential down the road of having swim meets. And so that's where our conversation became about the parking concern because we know from other places that have swim meets in our area that it becomes a parking concern with a lot of parking in the street. At the hearing the other day, as Jim mentioned, we did put a condition of approval in there that said no on-street parking. That would obviously be, you know, up to them to try to control that if there's people there at their facility using that. And then also give us something to go on in case we needed to get code enforcement involved. So I just, I bring that up in hopes that council or the applicant will at least address that, even though it was addressed last Thursday at the Board of Adjustments, you know, in relation to the parking waiver request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anything else from staff?
Yeah, one.
Mr. Douglas, please.
Anna. So now, instead of 10 feet in width, let's just, can you explain that? Is it still 10 feet in height?
No. So we can forget the width completely. They're going to comply by that. And so he's going to show, the council's going to show the regulation and where it is. He has it in his presentation. But it requires three feet of height, whether it's bushes or plants or anything like that, for landscaping.
So they don't want any?
Correct.
Waiver to the three feet. Okay.
I hope that I cleared up that confusion.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, you're good. Anyone else with questions? Ms. Davis?
Is this particular lot part of the subdivision?
Come a little closer to that mic, please.
No, it's, well, are you asking, like, what do you mean specifically?
Well, it's got 122 on here. It indicates to me it's a lot number.
That's the address number.
Okay. Well, it's not, it's not part of that. Does it Goshen Hills?
So I'll let the applicant and their council address that, but it's not owned by the residents or anything, or part of an HOA or anything like that. It's its own separate lot, but it could be served by any of those. There's like three subdivisions there.
Subdivision restrictions is what I was thinking about. If it's within the subdivision, it would have to meet the restrictions of the subdivision. I don't know if it's part of it. It's just kind of because of the way, all these lot numbers all the way around it.
Those are, yeah, those are all the address numbers.
But it looks like a subdivision. Is it a subdivision?
It's in.
I think we're going to need to get the applicant to address this when they come to the mic. Okay? Yeah, good question.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Marsh?
Yes. According to the plans, six, at least the 50, and I see 49 on the plans, but six of those are short-term parking. Do those count the same in the regulation? They are in the roundabout and they are?
Yeah, I know what you're referencing. Those do not count separately. Like, they count towards the 50.
They do count towards the 50? So those would be in events as?
I think those, like, are especially used for drop-off and pickup, but you can actually physically park there. Now, I don't know what the time requirements are going to be. Short-term is an ambiguous term. That could be four-hour parking, 30-minute parking, but I'll let the applicant speak to what their plans are for the time.
And I'll just make the statement, I see 43 functional parking spots then. Okay, thank you.
Including the short-term?
Not including the short-term, not counting. Okay, thank you.
All right. Further questions? All right. Go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out how to word this. If they have an event, just like Mr. Fisher decides to do, and they decide to open parking in their open space area, was that discussed anytime with you guys?
So they did testify that they could add additional impervious parking in the future if needed, but they didn't talk about, or at least I don't believe they talked about having people park on the grass. But are you asking if that's allowed, or if they said they would?
If that's allowed.
Brian, is parking on the grass allowed in Oldham County?
As long as it's not in the right of way.
No, my answer to that is I typically deal with regulations in the right of way, and that's not in the right of way. So I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Right. So it wouldn't be any different than, say, like, another facility out on 42 that has an event. They have a parking, but they have a big event. They park in their fields.
So, I mean, and technically, I think, let me, hold on. So it says road, on number two on here, roads and parking shall be of non-dusting, all-leather type. So they couldn't technically make like a, okay.
All right. Further questions? Okay, if we're good, we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good afternoon. Mike Swansburg, 117 West Main Street here in La Grange. I also have with me today the applicant and owner, Beth McBride, as well as the engineer on the project, Emily Estes. They may talk, so I would probably suggest at this point, if you all want to stand up and be sworn in for that purpose, so we can answer any questions that may be posed here today.
Where's your rate? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, again, I have the pleasure of really representing Mrs. McBride and her husband, Chris. And it's actually a really neat project. And we did meet with the Board of Adjustments last week. We had a conditional use permit application in front of that body that was approved. And there was a lot of really good discussion with that body last week about this particular project. So I do want to share a little bit about what it is that we're trying to accomplish here. And again, Ms. Barge talks a little bit about that, and I appreciate the comments. And again, always does a great job with that. But let me give you a little more about what's going on. This is the Harmony Hills Pool. And again, properly zoned as R2, it was located on what was formerly the Harmony Hills Swim and Racquet Club, which actually first opened its doors back in the early 1960s. And at one time, the pool actually had an active junior Olympic-sized pool with a clubhouse and a waiting pool. And as you can see, all of that here is seen from overhead on this particular picture. However, since that time, as Ms. Barge indicated, the pool and the grounds have become overgrown and dilapidated. And at present, none of the old attractions, for example, the pool and courts that were there once before are in any kind of active use. And as Ms. Barge indicated, the real problem is that, well, before I get into that, the Board of Adjustments, in fact, as I indicated, actually did grant that conditional use permit just last week for this to be used as a private club once again, just like it was back in the 1960s. Standards are a little different now than they were back in the 1960s, to be sure. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through this. So here is the proposed private club. And Ms. Barge showed you originally kind of the plan on this. And I wanted to, the area that's kind of encompassed in this pink square is really what we're talking about today for purposes of these two waivers that we're going to be asking you about. But the proposed concept combines a newly renovated 4,500-square-foot clubhouse and a swimming pool with a splash pad, as Mr. Sullivan indicated. You're going to have pickleball courts, a basketball court, and batting cages, all located on this property at these various locations. For example, courts you've got over here, batting cages, you've got the pool, the clubhouse. And what we're talking about today, of course, is this area here in front of you all. And this area would, in fact, this club would become available to club members. And as part of the renovation, what we are wanting to do, again, is install a 50-foot, or 50-space, excuse me, 50-space parking lot located approximately 35 feet from the right-of-way along Cliffwood Drive to the south. And there was a question before about subdivision. There are a number of subdivisions that actually surround this property, to answer your question. So it's not necessarily part of any one subdivision, to best of our knowledge. It's not necessarily subject to any HOA requirements of any particular subdivision. The areas, over the years, had kind of grown around it, but it is, in fact, surrounded by a subdivision, yes. So as you can see on there, there are clearly houses around it. And that was a point that was raised last week during the Board of Adjustments in terms of impact on the area traffic, for example. And a lot of that was discussed last week. I hope that answers your question, ma'am. So what we're talking about again is this area here, 50-foot or 50-space parking lot. I do want to talk about the spaces in terms of where they're located here and a 35-foot distance from the right-of-way along here, which is Cliffwood Drive to the south. So here's our request. The request, we respectfully coming to you all to grant two waivers of the Oldham County Comprehensive zoning ordinance, namely, one, a waiver of the vehicular use area perimeter landscape buffer area, say that five times fast, requirement under Section 300-050 of the ordinance, as well as a waiver of the minimum required number of parking spots for a clubhouse and a pool under Section 280-060. I want to talk first about that landscape buffer. So the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, particularly Environment Objective E-3-4, says that it actually encourages project to, quote, "provide appropriate buffers from adjacent use and increase the urban and suburban tree canopy." That said, the plan elements component to the comprehensive plan, which was passed in 2020, states, quote, "pedestrian convenience and safety should be of primary consideration in the designing of parking areas." That's located on page 52 of the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. Pedestrian convenience and safety should be of primary consideration in the designing of parking areas. Let's talk about that ordinance. So here's the ordinance that actually governs what the standard is for the landscaping buffer. And again, I apologize to Ms. Barge. We had some discussion back and forth about what it is that we're actually seeking. And I apologize to the extent that we were unclear on our end about what it was. So I want to make sure that that is noted as well. But presently, the actual standard that we are seeking you all to waive in this instance, under Section 300-050, provides that a vehicular use area perimeter landscape buffer area, or volvo for short, for vehicular use areas adjacent to rights of way, must contain a three-foot-high continuous screen to, quote, "reduce the visual impact of the vehicular use area." So here's the chart that essentially provides, here's what the standards are here. If you've got a vehicular use area, like a parking lot, adjacent to a right-of-way, like in this instance, we would say it's Cliffwood Drive to the south of the property. And if you are, again, the distance is greater than 30 feet but less than 50 feet, then you have a three-foot-high continuous screen. What I read that to be is that there's a three-foot high, but it extends the length, other than, of course, where you might have entrances and exits to that where there may be some impervious surface. But there would be a continuous barrier across the entirety of the length of the parking lot, at least, to the right-of-way to the south in this instance. So I wanted to zoom in a little bit. If you've got a plan in front of you, or if you've seen it, I want to zoom in just to kind of highlight for you the area that we're talking about. So again, this is the parking, the parking lot that's proposed for this particular plan. And what we're, this is a 35-foot, as you can see here, is 35 feet. It's 35-foot distance between what we considered, so the edge of this to what we'd say is the right-of-way, the roadway. And so 35 feet puts us in that spot that we're talking about, three-foot buffer. Under the proposal that we're submitting to you, we would intend to build that parking lot 35 feet away. And we are simply, under the ordinance required to build, again, three-foot-high continuous screen along the parking lot and the right-of-way. So we would have to have a continuous three-foot barrier along this area here. What's the big deal, right? Let me go ahead and throw that out there. Some people might be thinking, what's the big deal? Safety and security. The reason why we're doing this is because of safety and security. The existing Harmony Hills Pool, as you already heard Ms. Barge testify, the existing pool has become the target of vandals and other nuisance complaints, at least three separate instances since 2018. Problem is, it becomes attractive. In the law, there's this notion of an attractive nuisance, right? The idea that you have this space that people go to in some way in order to do nefarious acts, or to commit crime, or to commit vandalism, or whatever else. The problem is, it's been, it's essentially been unused and, for lack of a better term, abandoned for so long that it's kind of become an attractive nuisance for people. And what we are asking you all to do at this point is essentially give us the flexibility. What we're specifically saying, of course, is we would ask that the waiver of the buffer be made as a means of promoting transparency for the surrounding neighbors and to promote or support security in the parking lot. Really, what we're talking about here is gaining some flexibility in terms of what this buffer might look like. It's not to say that at the end of the day that there won't be anything in between the parking lot and the right-of-way. What we're saying is, we simply just don't want to be hampered by the limitation of the three-foot continuous barrier. There's still going to be some type of landscaping requirement that they're going to have to follow when they go through construction and further permitting on this front. But what we don't want to do is simply be wedded to this idea that we have to put a barrier in addition to theoretically this fence that is still here on the other side as part of this construction. We want to make sure that it's an open space. Right now, it's an open space. We want to make sure that when it is built up to be that club that they are wanting to build, and that they are spending a lot of effort and blood, sweat, and tears, it's a labor of love for them doing, that it is a place that continues to be safe and will be continued to be safe even when it's not operation hours. And they want to make sure that it is visible, and they have the flexibility, again, to be able to work out a plan that makes it attractive, not in a nuisance sense, but in a practical, real sense, and also make sure that the area, particularly parking, which is going to be along in this section here, is, again, promoting safety as part of that overarching plan that is included in the comprehensive plan that I just talked about. So safety and security is really what we're talking about. Number of parking spaces. So this is the second waiver. I promise I won't go 50 minutes. Number of parking spaces. Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. The plan elements, again, so let's go back to what the standard is. Plan elements component to the comprehensive plan, which I just talked about and referenced, which passed in 2020, states, and this is a different part of that same section, states, quote, "The design of parking areas should consider the delineation of internal circulation roadways, convenience of parking areas in relation to building entrances, appearance of parking areas from the public right-of-way, landscaping provisions, and access to loading areas and garbage dumpsters." We're not worried about loading areas and garbage dumpsters. I just wanted to make sure that sentence was completed, which is why it's there. That actually has no relevance to us in this way. However, and I mentioned before about landscaping provisions, again, what I'm not saying is that the applicant has no intent whatsoever to put any type of landscaping out there. They simply don't want to be limited to that minimum requirement when they're actually putting this plan into place and going forward with obtaining permits and actually building the place. They want to have some flexibility. They will continue, though, however, to work with the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Staff to make sure that they have an appropriate landscaping plan in place and make sure that it looks nice, right? Because again, there's no value in terms of having this move forward without it making sure that it looks nice for everybody in that neighborhood. So here's the parking lot number ordinance. And again, Ms. Barge has already referenced this. I just highlighted for your benefit. Again, Section 280-060 of the ordinance provides that off-street parking for clubhouses and community centers shall have a minimum one space for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. If a clubhouse and community center has a pool, the ordinance requires that an additional one space be put in for each 100 square feet of water area. So the calculations done by the engineer in this case would suggest on the proposal that the proposed square footage of the renovated clubhouse, which is about 4,500 square foot, and a renovated pool, which is about 5,000 square feet, would actually lead to the 68-space parking lot requirement. That's how we get to 68, is that we're combining the 4,500-square-foot area of the clubhouse itself and then adding the 5,000-square-foot of the pool on top of that, multiplied by the relative 250 versus 100 square feet for each one of them. And that's how you get 68. That's what the requirement would be in the absence of a waiver. So let's talk about the proposed reduction in parking. So we respectfully request, and we're asking that they permitted to install a 50-space parking lot with a turnaround parking lot with a turnaround circle, bicycle parking, and two-way entrance. So what we're really talking about here is not just the parking spot. The design actually incorporates a two-way entrance here for traffic flow, and also, we've got the turnaround entrance here. I would submit to you, it does say short-term parking. I don't know that officially the terms, per se, have actually been just, you know, actually delineated in terms of whether it's a 30-minute parking, 45-minute parking, two-hour parking, whatever that might be. I think the real concept behind this is to essentially allow for short-term drop-off. I actually count, if I count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spots in addition to the 43. That's how we get to 50 on our end. Engineer can certainly correct me if I'm wrong in my math, but that's, that's how I would read the 50 spots in terms of this proposal. It's actually off the screen, but this little square right up here is actually the bicycle parking as well. There are 15 bicycle spots in addition to the 50 parking spots here that we've got. Anecdotally, I want to make sure that we talked about this. Anecdotally, during the discussion last week in front of the Board of Adjustments, there was, there were some individuals who came in from the community and talked about this club when it was more active back in the 60s and 70s, and the stories that were shared at that point were that, at most, there was really ever an observation of maybe a half dozen, maybe slightly more cars that were actually sitting there at any one time. Historically speaking, individuals would bike to the pool, they would drop off at the pool, for example. There wasn't a whole lot of actual cars sitting there at the time. And so what the applicant really is talking about wanting to do here, and I do want to get into this idea of, you know, swim meets and everything, because it did come up last week. But what the applicant wants to do is they're trying to start off small and realistic, right? Whether this place has swim meets or not is an aspirational goal at some point, maybe at some point. But realistically, right now, what we're trying to do is get this project off the ground, get some interest, get people to sign up as members, make sure that it becomes a sustainable idea before you really start talking about the big picture, you know, ideas of swim meets and everything else. What I would submit to you, and what we talked about last week, of course, is the idea of there's, there would be an enforcement component. The applicant agreed that there would be no on-street parking. That was a binding element that we agreed to last week. And what I would go ahead and submit to you is that, to the extent that the applicant believes that there needs to be a revision to the parking to expand it in some way, they would look to see what that might look like, work with staff, and then probably end up having to come back to you for that purpose and see if they can get another approval at that time. But right now, when we, you know, again, this was, when we talk about swimming, I don't want people to get too bogged down in that Mrs. McBride has got a, has a vision for this property. She has a recollection of this property. I don't want to speak for her in that context, other than just to share that and to say that there's really a goal is to make sure that this gets off on the right foot, utilizing the existing space, minimizing, quite frankly, and there are two goals I put on the screen as well. One, it minimizes the impervious surface of an area that is not presently paved, and Mr. Silman talked about that. Right now, the parking area that existed before was all dirt and grass. There's a road, there's a dirt road that goes, a gravel road that goes up then comes back, but there is no parking lot there. There was no old parking lot. There was no requirement for a parking lot, as far as we know, back at that time. So we are obviously under a new set of standards. We're trying to adhere to that to the extent possible. But we're asking for the 50 because it, we're trying to be realistic in terms of how many people are going to be there at any given time based upon the information that's available to us. And of course, we never know at the end of the day if somebody, if we get a mass group of people that shows up at one time. The applicant stated very clearly last week that they would make every effort to ensure that no on-street parking occurred, and that they would try to enforce that as absolute best as possible, that they would make sure that if it came down to it, they would actually need to turn people away. If it gets to a point where they need to add more spots, then they are certainly considering the idea of doing that. But of course, as a practitioner, there are some spatial limitations because the property actually ends up dropping off back behind the parking lot on this side, and it does start to drop off on this side. So there are some limitations in terms of how many parking spots it can actually put in there, aside from what is being proposed today. But overall, what we would want to submit to you is that, in addition to the actual spot number, the concept that is put forward as part of this plan, it actually provides greater flow of traffic in and out of property, we believe, which is ultimately the desired outcome of the Comprehensive Plan. That's the ultimate, the desired outcome, is that you've got the inflow here, you've got two, you've got a two-way entrance, you've got a circular drop-off area and back out, but to the extent you're going to stay, you'll have a place to park because the regulations require it. They require a parking lot now. So we can't avoid a parking lot. We're just asking that that parking lot start off small, and if needs to grow, if it's possible to grow, that it may be able to do it at some point. But this is all part of an innovative design effort on the part of the applicant to, again, take what is already in place and try to make it that much better for the members who are there, and quite frankly, for the neighborhood that surrounds it. So here's the summary. Again, Mr. and Mrs. McBride respectfully asked the commission to grant them two waivers. One, a waiver to eliminate the VULBA requirement set forth in Section 300-050 of the Comprehensive Ordinance, and two, a waiver of the minimum parking lot requirement set forth in 280-060 of that same ordinance to permit the installation of a 50-space parking lot versus a 68-space parking lot at the Harmony Hills Pool site. And I would just note again, in support of these requests, we state that, one, these waiver requests are intended to actually promote, in our opinion, not hinder the health, safety, and welfare of Oldham Countingans by increasing transparency in the proposed parking lot, and, two, it also incorporates, I would argue, innovative design concepts for the parking lot and entrance such that the basic objectives of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance are still achieved. That's all from me. I'm going to check to make sure that the applicant or the engineer doesn't have anything else, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Emily Estes. I'm the engineer that drew that plan you guys were referring to. I think-
Can I get you to state your address for the-
Yes. So that's 601 North Shore Drive in Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130. And the mention of short-term parking, I think that was just a note that was left on there, you know, kind of in the beginning when we were looking at different ways we're going to make this parking lot work. And yes, it is a thoughtful design to incorporate different means of transportation to this site. That's what the short term was about, is not necessarily to be used as a certain time limit, it's just, that's kind of how you would use it. Might be a drop-off situation, might not, has some flexibility. That's it. That's just what I wanted to add on that.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all we have at this point for our, of course, we're certainly happy to answer any questions that the commission might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in his opposition to this application? Questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move into questions of the applicant from the commission. Commissioners, who has questions? Mr. Klingenfuss.
Do you need any provisions for garbage pickup or fire department on the traffic?
Any provisions for, I'm sorry, garbage pickup or fire department?
I don't see how you, can-
Can you get a little closer to that mic, sir?
Can the garbage truck, you know, access that, the fire department?
Here, I'm going to do the big one. There you go.
Yeah, that's great. Yes, so using the wide drive aisles that we have and the nice turnaround, that provides great access for a fire truck. I could put fire truck exhibit on this. We usually go through that when I get the fire marshal to approve the plan prior to construction, but this site is definitely designed for some good in and out by a fire truck.
So the fire department's okay?
I have not submitted to them yet, but we will submit during construction design.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, Mr. Klingenfuss?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Who else has questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Okay. All right, where are we? Mr. Swansburg, we will be dispensing with rebuttal, so that moves us into your final statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Again, I appreciate your time, appreciate the questions, and appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm just going to reiterate for purposes of this, for this presentation, again, we're asking for two waivers. One is a waiver of the VULBA requirement set forth in 300-050, and also a waiver, which is the landscape buffer requirement, and also a waiver of the minimum space lot requirement set forth in 280-060 of that same ordinance to permit the installation of a 50-space parking lot versus a 68-space parking lot, so a reduction of 18 spaces at the pool site. And again, I would just note, in support of this, the waivers are intended to promote, not hinder, the health, safety, and welfare of Oldham Countingans by increasing transparency in the proposed parking lot, allowing, again, both the applicant and the neighborhood to be able to see and make sure that individuals who are not supposed to be there aren't, in fact, there, particularly at times when the pool might not be, or the clubhouse might not be in operation. And then, of course, it also, I would submit to you, incorporates an innovative design concept for the parking lot and entrance such that the basic objectives, basic objectives of the zoning ordinance are still achieved, those, of course, being to, again, ease of access, pedestrian safety, and ultimately, design in how it appears both to, with the property itself and to those who are around it as well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back whatever balance of time I might have.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. All right, Mr. Fisher.
All right, so you have two waivers on the table for you. Those are listed on pages two and three of your staff packet. You have heard a presentation from staff, as well as a lengthy presentation from the applicant's counsel. And so the first waiver would be a waiver of the-
Vehicular use landscape buffer area, or VULBA. And remember, it's the three-feet height, not the 10-feet width.
Yes, thank you for your help. That is attached with a condition of approval that that waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing, as well as suggested motions, potential motions to approve and deny that waiver. The second, you want me to just go ahead and go with the second waiver?
Sure.
The second waiver is for those minimum parking requirements, as they're requesting a waiver of 18 parking spaces. Same thing, you've got motions to approve and deny, as well as that that waiver shall only apply to the plans reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Baxter, anything to add?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, discussion. Seeing none, floor is open for a motion. Who would like to bring forward a motion? Ms. Jones, was that you? All right, you're up.
In regards to docket PZ-25-009, I make a motion to approve the waiver of the landscape buffer area, the three-foot height, because of the fact that strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship, and to allow the safety of the people around, and also to allow for the divine innovations of this case, they will achieve the basic objectives of the regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, Mr. Baxter.
And I want to include any-
Oh, yes.
Any binding elements.
All right, Mr. Baxter.
You have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Mr. Elder, thank you. Discussion. All right, Ms. Edgar, we'll move into roll call vote.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the waiver for the vehicular use perimeter landscape buffer area has been approved on a motion of nine to zero. Floor is now open for the second waiver consideration. Ms. Kraus, was that you?
I'll take a stab at this one. Okay, so regarding docket PZ-25009, I make a motion to approve the waiver because the strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship due to the topographic and fall-offs of the other areas that would be probably most likely for parking spaces. And I think it provides the desirable effect to the community in the surrounding areas.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Mr. Baxter, we're good?
Ms. Kraus, you incorporate the condition of approval that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Yes, sir.
With that, we have a good motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis, thank you. We will move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve the waiver of the minimum parking requirements has been approved on a vote of nine to zero. I may have to, right? We have to get the deputy to pull him out of here. All right. Next item up, PZ-25-010. Ms. Edgar, will you please read the docket?
Docket PZ-25-010. An application has been filed by Scott Ramsor for a waiver of the minor plat rule for a property located at 6621 Sumac Lane, Crestwood. The property is 1.033 acres and is owned R2 residential district.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And for staff.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, John Heine, Planner One, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. Today's waiver is for a minor subdivision plat regulation rule at 6621 Sumac Lane in Crestwood. An application has been filed by Mr. Scott Ramsor for the approval of a waiver of the minor plat subdivision rule on approximately 5.62 acres. The property is located at 6621 Sumac Lane in Crestwood, and the zoning is R2 residential. As you can see, the land use is also residential with that R2, and currently is 5.62 acres with a parcel proposed at 1.003 acres. Here's the plat in question and the zoning. Case history, it was posted to the website, 2/26/2025. Adjointing property owner notices were mailed on the 5th of March, 2025, and public notice appeared in the Oldham era on the 13th of March. For our site history, we have, on the 21st of July, staff approved a minor plat, plat number 23-039, to create tracks two and three with a 40-foot access and utilities easement through track two to access track three. You can see here on this map, this is track two, this is track three, and in red is the access easement that was created during that minor plat process. On June 24th of 2024, staff approved a minor plat, 24-030, to create a 1.835-acre tract to be known as track two. Residual track one has the 5.62 acres in existence today. Here we have in blue that 1.835 acre tract that was created, and in orange, the remaining 5.6 acre tract. The applicant is proposing to create a new 1.003 acre tract. 4.6 acres will remain as the residual. You'll see this plat in your staff packet. Here's the proposed tract and the remainder. Our notes, according to Section 2.2, definitions of terms in the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, a minor subdivision is defined as a subdivision of land into not more than three lots within a five-year time period and not involving a new public street or private road. Again, a reiteration from the book. The original parent tract was subdivided into newly created tracks in 2023 and 2024. The tracks created in 2023 and 2024 are within that five-year timeframe, and thus, the applicant is requesting this waiver of Section 2.2 of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations to allow the creation of the proposed 1.003 acre tract. Major subdivision, as it's defined, is a subdivision of land into four or more lots or any subdivision involving a new public street or private road, also, any division of land beyond the three lots within a five-year time period from a parent tract or tract divided therefrom. The applicant has stated that their intent is to reduce their financial burden and renovate the home on the lot to sell. If the waiver request is approved, the applicant would then be required to submit a minor plat application, and comments will be requested by, from serving agencies prior to final approval by staff. We had a previous similar case, PZ-23-026. An application was filed for a minor plat subdivision waiver to allow the creation of more than two new tracks and one residual within a five-year period at 8725 Ash Avenue in Peewee Valley. This was approved for the following reasons. Based on testimony and evidence presented at the hearing, it complies with the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, and the waiver is consistent with Section 2.2, and a condition of that approval was a consolidation plat be filed and approved by staff. That motion approved at nine to one. In summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the minor subdivision plat rule on approximately 5.6 acres. The property is located at 6621 Sumac Lane in Crestwood. Potential conditions of approval would be, the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25th, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing, and a minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for relevant agency review and approval. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Anything else from staff? We're good? All right. Commissioners, questions for staff? No questions? All right, guys. We'll move into presentation from applicant. Thank you. Let's go ahead and get you sworn, get your name and address.
Do you some-
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not them but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Scott Ramsor, 6905 Jamie Lane, Crestwood, Kentucky, 40014. All right. Part of my presentation, I may need to make a couple corrections here on some of the images that were shown. I can scroll back here on this image here. Not sure if I can. There you go. On this image here, this image is incorrect. I need to make a correction to this, and I'll show you some other images here in just one minute. Excuse me. The parcel of land that I purchased was just simply this red space right here. June, I believe, May of 2024, we purchased 7.5 acres, and this was that 7.5 acres. Prior to my purchase, this section right here had been subdivided from the previous eight acres, or approximately eight acres of land that was under trust, under, trust under the Cassidy Trust, the owner of that, of that space. In fact, the, I want to say daughter or granddaughter of the gentleman who had purchased and built this home on the parcel that I'm requesting a waiver on today, his daughter or granddaughter used to live in this home until it became unusable, and her age was, was, was getting to be older. And they ended up building this home that was right over here, and I'm not sure when this had been subdivided, but this is where she had, had resided, and they actually sold this parcel of land around the same time that I was in the process of selling this two-acre. And so, if I were able to put a line, I'll show you another image in just one minute, but if I were to put a line that went across this space right here, roughly follow this tree line right here. And so, again, I'll show you an image. So, that two-acre parcel of land, or 1.83 acre with the easement to the road totaling approximately two acres of land, was sold off last year. And so, that was the, the first subdivision that I had done, but in 2023, as John was mentioning, this subdivision had occurred. And so, what I'm requesting today, I can switch over to-
Can we go to overhead, please?
This is the, track two was the portion that I had previously subdivided last year in 2024 and had sold off at that time. So, just a different image that may, may not reflect what was on that screen previously. What I'm requesting a waiver on today is this portion right here, the 1.003 acre parcel, including the right-of-way dedication, totaling approximately a little over one acre of land. The intention is to, to sell that with renovating the home or selling the land by itself to, to a would-be buyer in order to be able to reduce my financial burden. In order, I live, I live two blocks away from here. I thought I had an image of that. I live two blocks away from here, and I like to take walks in the morning, and so, I was walking one morning, and we, we live on a corner lot of, of the neighborhood on Jamie Lane, a little pocket neighborhood there. And when we had purchased our home and built that home, it was the last home in that subdivision. Subsequently, it was also one of the more undesirable lots, and so, we, we purchased the lot, we, we have one-third of an acre there, and the acre, or the lot is a fall-away lot, and so, the front, the front two sides, or the front and the side of the house, both fall away, and in order to be able to build the house that we have there, we were left with no backyard. I have a 10-year-old daughter and a 12-year-old son, and when I had been taking a walk in the morning, I, I spoke to my wife and asked her if it'd be okay if I put an offer in on it, put an offer in on it, and the offer was accepted, and so, we, we purchased the land. The desire of that, of that property has been to give my, my children a space to play as well on, on this land. And so, so that was the intent that we have with purchasing that land, and now, we're faced with the financial burden of paying for that land, and so, we've been trying to sell off portions of that in order to be able to carry that, carry the remainder. So, I also would be remiss if I, if I didn't address the ideas that we have with the remaining 4.6 acres. I don't have intention of proposing anything that is not part of this, this waiver request, and so, I, I could go into discussion on that if that would be helpful, or I, yeah, I'm willing to discuss some of the ideas that we have on that, too, but as part of today's presentation, I'm requesting that waiver, so. Maybe a question? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions at this point.
Yeah, I think you are, and of course, the commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions of you shortly, so.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. So, I'm going to look through my, yeah, okay. I think that that's it.
All right. Mr. Fisher, did you have something? Okay. All right. Very well. All right. So, point of order, anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? All right. So, we're moving into questions from commission of you now.
Okay.
Commissioners, who has questions? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Ramsor, I'm, I'm a little confused, but let me just ask you this. You indicated, you originally purchased about seven and a half acres-
Yes, sir.
Of this whole area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, somewhere along the line, you sold a tract of land, I guess, was it two acres or less than two acres?
Yes, sir. So, on the screen there, you, you'll see track two, which, which may or may not be part of your packet. I'm not sure, I didn't know you had screen, sorry. You'll see track two there, which is 1.835 acres, with the track three at the, along the line of Sumac Lane totaling around two acres of land. It's, I think it's 1.9, actually, the purchaser of that land is here.
And-
And I believe it's 1.95 acres, if I do my math.
It's reading there as 1.835. Are we looking at a different lot?
No, if you, just, just, on, at the south end, I suppose, of that is track three, it's .108 acres.
All right, so it's off, off of this plan.
So-
Correct?
My question is, then, you already sold part of the lot-
Yes, sir.
On track two.
Yes, sir.
And did you come into the planning office to subdivide, I guess, the whole tract of that, seven and a half acres, or you just did it yourself?
At the time of subdividing track two from track one, as shown, it was within that three, allowance of three subdivisions within a five-year period of time, and so, I, I was not told that I needed to present a, I don't believe I was under the requirement of presenting a request to subdivide that portion at that time. It had to be approved, but I, I didn't have to come before the board, as far as I understand.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So, this has been filed, recorded?
This has been filed, and it was actually part of this presentation that Mr. John had given.
Okay. So, now we have these division of the remaining five point some of acres, and you want to do a division of it to one acre from the five acres of the proposed original track one? Is that correct?
Yes. Well, yes, originally, track one, as seen on your, I believe, your left-hand side of the screen there, track one was the remaining portion of land from the original purchase of 7.5 acres, so 7.5 minus two, so I'm remaining seven, excuse me, 5.5 acres, or 5.6 to, to acres. From that track one, I'm proposing to, I'm requesting a waiver of removing one, a little over one acre from that parcel, remaining, remaining 4.6 acres, sir.
So, going back to the previous sale-
Yes, sir.
Listed as the owners on the right-hand side of that, the new proposal, is that who you sold the land to and they built?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I guess that's what confused me, but anyway, so now, we're into, I guess, this consider still the third, three or more, correct? Okay.
Yeah. So, you're allowed to create two new tracks off of a parent every five years, which gives you a total then of three tracks because you've got the residuals. So, he's asking for a waiver from that requirement to then become the third new lot.
Right.
Which is why John, usually on our presentations, will color coordinate to just kind of walk you through the progression of what's happened over the last five years. So, I think that's where we're getting muddied waters.
That's why we're kind of muddied waters. It almost didn't sound like he got approval for the first one, and that's all right about that. No problem. I just want to put it on record again. You mentioned that you have no intentions to divide or sell off any remaining of the four and a half acre track one. Is that what you said?
No, I was, no, I don't think I commented on that.
You didn't?
No.
So, what is your intention for track one?
So, for track one, I have, I have ideas of what I would like to do. Nothing set in stone. It's technically, financial decisions is really what, what remains. The ideas that I have is either to build a home and a barn for my family and I, is one idea, so that we have a place to play. Second idea would be to, to indeed subdivide that, that remaining four and a half acres, and so, I would be remiss if I didn't present that idea of what I have to you. The, the intention is to, or the proposed intention with that, with the, so the idea, the idea, again, this is not part of this waiver request, so I don't technically know what I'm going to do, so I have a pretty rudimentary, rudimentary sketch of what I would like to, to consider as well. And so, I volunteer my personal time over at Forest Springs Nursing Home. I have previously done that in Nazareth Home in Louisville, and have a heart for the elderly. There's a, so, with my own personal intention, I have thought about proposing the idea of having individual lots that I could build homes onto with servicing the 55 and older community, and so, those, those homes could, could be in service of that. So, that, that is one idea I've had for that remaining four and a half. But one idea that, the other idea is to simply sell the home that we are in with no backyard or, or space for my kids to-
Your intention is to move into track two or track one?
I'm sorry.
Or you're just using track two to sell off and the house?
To pay for the land, yes, sir. So, that we don't have the financial burden of-
Okay. So, then, if his intention is, I guess, the staff is to, because he said his intention is to sell off the 400, or the four and a half acre tract, so then, he would be going into a major subdivision? He comes back to us again?
Correct.
Okay. And then, we can ask questions about that if that comes to it?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, he's asking for a waiver from the minor plat rule, so.
But I mean-
We've, technically, by rule, that-
The definition that was read into the record, by definition, he has a major subdivision, right?
Correct. So, so major subdivision, you'll see on Page Three of your staff packet, there's definitions there of a minor subdivision and a major subdivision. Technically, by definition, a major subdivision is a subdivision of land at a four or more lots, or any subdivision involving a new public street or private road. So, technically, in asking for a waiver from the minor plat rule, by definition, you're doing a major subdivision, even though you wouldn't typically think of that. So, if he comes back with this other project that he was just referring to, he would have to come back with a new preliminary subdivision plan for these eight, or whatever it is, additional homes on that, on that lot. But that's not the point of this hearing, so I don't want to get too bogged down into what he may potentially do down the road with the, the residual tract. So, right now, he's asking for one additional lot over the, the five-year rule. If not, he waits another, I think the last one was done in 2024, the one before that was 2023, so he waits how many ever years he's got to wait, and then he splits it off. He just comes to staff and gets it approved. He's asking to do that within the five-year timeframe.
Bobby, go ahead. Mike, please.
On track three, could that done as a consolidation? That wouldn't have been a division. It joins.
On track three?
I think you-
Isn't that what you got?
I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth here, but track three, I believe, is the one that's on the screen there?
Piece of property.
That was the easement, that's the roadway easement portion. It's labeled as track three on the, on the design. It was actually sold as one parcel of property.
It's not considered a, okay.
All right, further questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, just clarification. I mean, so, if he comes in back in, in a year and says, I want a waiver for a minor major plat, I mean, are we back in the-
It's subjective, is the way I'll answer that, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Okay, it is. I mean, you know, you, you might not be considered unreasonable to observe that and then conclude that, wait a minute, this wholly represents just a major subdivision plan that's planned out in slow motion, and you might dig in and- It's planned out in slow motion and you might dig in and insist on a on a major subdivision plan instead. Yeah, you would be within your rights for that type of decision.
If I can interrupt, presenting the ideas of what I might do with tract one as well, excuse me, the remaining four and a half acres was simply to be for or transparent and allow allow so that you're not blindsided by if I were to come in later and ask for some kind of a.
Mr. Ramsor, correct me if I'm wrong, but to describe those otherwise highly speculative at the moment would be appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay, anything else, Mr. Douglas? Okay, anyone else? Questions? All right, Mr. Ramsor, any final statements?
I respectfully and humbly request the waiver of the minor plat rule on subdividing the one acre. It will help very much financially.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Fisher.
All right, on page two of your staff packet, you do have motions to approve and deny the waiver of the minor subdivision plat. Potential conditions of approval would include that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing and that a minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval.
All right. Commissioners, any questions, any discussion? All right, floor is open for a motion, guys. While we're mulling this over, Mr. Fisher, if the commission fails to take action on this, what happens?
Fail to take action by meaning denied or just nobody brings up a motion?
No motion, no vote.
I don't. I would have to look at Roberts rules, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And if Magistrate Jeffries is watching, I'm sure he'll text me and tell me the answer he does from time to time. Interject.
He did say he was going to watch. Keep your phone handy.
All right, commissioners, meanwhile, the floor is open. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Elder.
Regarding docket PZ 25 dash 010, I would make a motion to approve the minor subdivision plat because it does comply with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations.
Mr. Baxter, anything input wise on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, guys, we have a motion on floor.
I will include the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Elder. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Ms. Davis, thank you. Discussion? Be so anxious. Okay, we'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
Mr. Klingemfuss.
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
No.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the waiver is requested under PZ dash, or are we, 25 dash 010 has been approved on a vote of seven to two. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If if a matter requires a motion to be made and there is no motion, the legal effect and under Roberts rules, that is a denial. So if nobody were to step up like Mr. Elder did moments ago and we sat here for a while, then that would have been a denial.
Fair enough. Thank you for the input. That's different from, say, a major subdivision application, yes?
Yes, yes. So there's a there's a statutory proceeding that you all have a period of time to act, I believe.
Okay.
But it's, I don't know. I mean, once it gets presented to you, that begs a different question, I think, once it's presented. If you all.
You know, for what it's worth, I mean, I've been here a long time and I've never seen a docket item come before this commission upon which we did not have a motion and a decision. Just as a matter of how we do things, so food for thought. All right, next docket item, Ms. Edgar, will you please read us off?
Docket PZ dash 25 dash 01, an application has been filed by Platinum Homes LLC for a waiver to allow residential use in an industrial zoned district for a property located at 102 North Oak Street, La Grange. The property is 0.08 acres in zoned I1 light industrial.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar.
That was 011, right? Not 01 for the docket number? I thought she said 01 and 011.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Hein, you'll have applicant's presentation?
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Presentation, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the commission, John Hein, Planner One, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. This is a waiver for residential use in a light industrial zoned area at 102 North Oak Street in La Grange. Application has been filed by Platinum Homes LLC for the approval of this waiver for residential use in a light industrial district. Property is located at 102 North Oak Street in La Grange. Property is zoned I1 light industrial district. The land use is currently vacant and the size is .08 acres. Site history, on July 30 of 2015, a demolition permit was approved for the previous residential structure on the lot. I believe the applicant can testify to how that was lost, how that structure was lost. Posted to the county website, excuse me, the case history for this, it was posted to the county website on the 26th of February in 2025. Joining property owners notices were mailed on the 5th of March, 2025. And on the 13th of March, it appeared in the Oldham area for public notice. Here is the lot in question. And here is the relative zoning with I1 on the lot and C2 to the north. There was a, excuse me, notes, there was a residential building on that site previously that burned down. The applicant is requesting a waiver to put a duplex style residential building on their .08 acre property. Here's a photograph of that lot taken from the street. The adjoining property, the other adjoining property and the lot immediately across the street. The applicant's property is zoned I1 light industrial. The current zoning does not allow residential usage. There are several adjacent properties that are zoned I1 that include residential buildings. If the waiver is approved, the applicant will also need to apply for a setback variance from the La Grange City Board of Adjustments and Appeals. On this map, what we have is in blue. We have light industrials owned with residential use on them currently surrounding the parcel in question today. And in green, we have residential use in the commercially zoned properties adjacent across the street. Future land use map predicts this area as commercial while across the street is predicted to be residential use. Here we have the plat that's presented in your staff packet, which I believe shows a possible fence encroachment. Makes the property appear even smaller in that photograph that you saw. Here are the regulations for I1 in which you will not see residential as either a permitted use or a conditional use, hence their application for this waiver today. Previous similar cases, PZ 24 dash 018, an application has been filed for residential use waiver to allow residential use in an industrial zone district for property located at 2616 Singleton Lane in La Grange. That property was zoned I2 heavy industrial. This was approved for the following reasons, strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship. Residential use is fitting based on the fact that there are other residential use in the I2 zoning. That motion carried to approve a 12 to one. Here is a rendering of the proposed duplex style structure provided by the applicant. I believe I've included that in your staff packets along with the rear view and the proposed floor plans. In summary, the applicant has requested a waiver for residential use in a light industrial district. Potential conditions of approval would be the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing and that the applicant will be required to seek a setback variance from the City of La Grange Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hein. Questions for Mr. Hein, commissioners? No questions?
I have a question for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
When it comes to waivers, does the planning commission have authority to grant waivers on changing or authorizing a zoning map change? Because the applicant is requesting, at least on the application, we are requesting the commission to allow the lot to be used as R3 for the use of a duplex.
So I guess my answer to your question will revolve around in areas where we see residential use in what has been historically industrial zoned areas. And as you go out Jefferson Street, you go to Singleton Lane, all that area around the railroad tracks. When they came up with the zoning layer, they said, oh, this is going to be industrial or commercially zoned because it borders the railroad tracks. But we know over time, almost all of the area down there is being used residentially that people have have been able to come in and it's happened once since I've been here. And you know, John mentioned in his presentation on Singleton Lane is that we've allowed people to come in and ask for a waiver of being able to use the property residentially like it has been despite the fact that it's currently zoned industrial. So I guess the answer to my question would be is you're not necessarily changing the zoning. You're allowing them to continue to utilize the property as it's been utilized for years. And in this case, there was a house that was there, it burnt down. It has been a considerable amount of time before it's been replaced, but it's it's being used in the same sense that it that it was previously. Same way on Singleton Lane, it was an industrial zoned property. The guy came in and said he wants to be able to build a house on it despite it being industrial. Would it be nice if the city or somebody would come in and just completely rezone that area to residential? It would be a big help on this body and planning and zoning for sure, because that's the way that property has been used, but.
How long it was, how long has it been zoned? I1.
That's the original zoning designation from when planning and zoning was initiated back, what, late 60s?
Yeah, as far as I know, that's the original.
Years. So I have a question that I think goes along with where you are, right? Suppose, Mr. Hein, I'm going to put you on the spot. Suppose this were pressed into industrial use. Is there any possible industrial use that can actually fit onto a .08 acre parcel? Given setbacks requirements for industrial uses?
Yeah, no, not not based on the setback as the commissioner has just described.
So, you know, I don't know exactly what to do with it, but it's just a different perspective on it. Go ahead.
Well, and I will say this, just so, you know, the applicant's counsel will maybe address this is in the instances that we have seen these waivers for residential use, almost always it has been in order to build a single family house. The one thing that does differ with this case is that he is asking for a duplex. You know, a two family dwelling, which would obviously put it there within the R3, like you said, that is the one difference. He would have to go and ask for a setback variance from the La Grange Board of Adjustments if you all decide to pass this today. So that is kind of the one difference from the previous cases we've had. And they can address that on on why they want to go that route, but.
All right, good. Commissioners, any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Hein. We'll move into presentation from applicant. And we'll need to go ahead and. Let's get you both sworn in before we get underway.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, and we'll gather your names and addresses as you begin speaking, okay?
Hi, my name is Stacy, S T A C Y, Ginn, G I N N. I'm a counsel for Platinum Homes LLC, which is a single member LLC owned by Mr. Lance Hall. My address is 7164 Highway 421 North Milton, Kentucky. 40045. As was previously stated, my client, I'll refer to Platinum as my client throughout, is proposing to build approximately a 990 square foot duplex, two story duplex style structure on the lot that is now vacant there at 102 North Oak. It is currently an I1 designation. Interestingly, based on your all's discussion, if you look at the area, you'll find other single family residences surrounding the property with this property formerly being the site of a single residence that has since burned and is vacant. So looking at it from a comprehensive plan standpoint, this would, this proposal to build a residential style structure would comport really well with the compatibility and element of the comprehensive plan. It would keep things more in line with what's in the surrounding area. I don't think that particular area materialized as it was set forth many, many years ago. I think the railroad track and the nature of the area at the time probably lent itself to an industrial zone classification. I would submit to you, based on Oldham County's definitions and zoning ordinance, this really comports really well with a R4A type lot. If you look at the, if you look at R4A.
Oh, let's go overhead, please.
When you look at the elements of a R4A residential lot, you'll see that it's a 3,000 square foot for detached structures. The setbacks are really small, which on this size of a lot, you would have to have very small setbacks. The density requirement and the size of the structure per the size of the lot equate really well with what's proposed here. So just interestingly enough, if if someone could come down and just rezone this particular lot, R4A would pretty much check all the boxes there in terms of what's being proposed here. So I understand that this is a waiver. So I just wanted to point out real quickly that it does comport with with your all's definition of R4A. As a waiver, we feel like it's an undue hardship to the landowner for this particular land use to be considered industrial. The size of the lot precludes any type of industrial use. Point 08008 acres is approximately 3,400 square feet. That's just not enough square footage to have any type of setbacks that would lend itself to any type of industrial use. So the waiver that we are requesting, I think it was suggested. So the waiver that we are requesting, I think it was suggested, something came up in discussion about R3, and that's why that appears on the application. You know, I've since looked at this, and as I've stated earlier, I really think R4A would be the more appropriate. There are residents surrounding the property on three sides with the street front. There is room to do some variance setbacks that will allow for some parking that will meet the parking requirements in the zoning ordinance, and any other type of proposed use for this lot would almost by definition be precluded because of its size. The reason that my client would like to build the duplex, obviously, there's some rental property in that area, investment property, this would maximize the use for that space. He's going up instead of out, so for a footprint of around 900 square feet, he will achieve two living units. It really wouldn't be, I think by definition, be considered multifamily, it's actually two-family, but it would maximize the use of the space. My client is a reputable builder, a great reputation in this area for building properties such as this. Obviously, you can see from the rendering and the plans, it would be a tasteful building that would enhance the appearance of that area and fit in really well. So that's based on our current situation and the fact that we're really not doing a zone change. Again, I would reiterate, this would be a classic zone change, where I would be asking you to take this from industrial to R4A. I understand that's not what's on the table here, but that's the sentiment behind it. So the waiver, again, is just the fact that there was a residential building there before. Residences do surround the area, even though it's a commercially zoned area, and, you know, the hardship that would create for my client in terms of being able to purposely use that land is a reason for the waiver request. And there's a precedent been set, I think there was another case that was brought about that was approved as a residential area in the industrial zone, so, yep.
Very well. All right, anything to add?
Sure.
All right, let's run through our protocol here for a minute, check for anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application and those against. All right, questions from the commission for the applicant? Mr. Marsh, please. Oh, Ms. Kraus. You guys are gonna have to figure this out, okay? Let me turn that on for the record. I heard you say a couple times you're talking about the R4A and its light industrial, this is just a waiver to the point brought up.
I'm sorry, I don't want to muddy the water. I was articulating, you know, from a theoretical standpoint, this would be a prototypical R4A lot based on your all's definition.
Now zoning change, you're just saying a waiver on this?
We just want a waiver, yes.
Perfect. Clarification I wanted, thank you. Okay, Ms. Kraus, you up?
Okay, so when I look at the picture, this little featured picture, is that the street view that comes out on North Oak Avenue?
Yeah, the property will face North Oak, that would be the, looking at it from the street.
Okay, and this picture shows a bunch of parking spaces in front of it, is that the intent is to have that? Okay, that was just all I had.
Fair enough. All right. Further questions from the commission? Further questions? Mr. Douglas, please.
Just make sure, you're not asking for any, because you mentioned something about variances, maybe for something, you're saying no?
Ideally, I would love to walk in and say, hey, let's change this to R4A, and because R4A has these small setbacks, we could just walk out of here with the whole sheet and work match done, but that's just not the case. I think City of La Grange, correct, if I'm not mistaken, has to approve the setbacks. Is that because of the location?
Mr. Douglas, we might bristle at the idea because it's all within industrially-zoned lots, we might call it spot zoning instead. So it has its own difficulties.
Right.
Right?
Was there any problem, because I see on the diagram, it's a possible building encroachment?
There's a movable shed that my client has, I think, already moved.
All right, further questions? All right, so we're dispensing with rebuttal, of course. Anything else to say as your final statement?
Just to summarize, requesting a waiver based on the factors of economic hardship to my client, if we could not do something of this nature with the property, there's a precedent for this that has been set by the commission, and the surrounding area lends itself to this type of property. It will improve the area, and that's our criteria for asking for the waiver.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Fisher.
All right, on page two, you do have motions to approve or deny the waiver. Does have on there about the undue hardship, and you've heard the applicant's counsel mention that several times, due to those conditions. And then the proposed conditions of approval would be that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing, and I believe we probably ought to put one in there in reference to the variance that would be required before the La Grange Board of Adjustments, before a building permit would be issued, something to that nature.
So we have the applicant will be required to seek a setback variance from City of La Grange Board of Adjustments and Appeals, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Before a building permit could be issued.
Before a building permit can be issued.
If I can ask a question, my client's brought up. What standards will apply, or is this something that, when it comes to the variances, we'll have to hash out with the City of La Grange? I guess my client's asking the designation of which type of residential, if you follow what I'm saying?
Right.
Because an R3 varies differently from an R4, R4A, I would argue this is a classic R4A. Of course, we're not doing a zoning change, so, but my client's just sort of asking what the rules of the game are in terms of the actual district.
So this is what I was talking about earlier, where it gets difficult because we've never really said, you know, for a certain type of zoning class, it's just been residential use in an industrial-zoned property, so...
So you're stuck with the I setbacks, so he's gonna have to ask for a waiver of the I setbacks from the City of La Grange.
Okay, all right.
I mean, the I, I don't even know what they're, 50 feet or 100 feet?
Yeah, they're 100 feet in the front, side yard's 35, yeah.
So we'd be on somebody else's property, right? Yeah, so, I mean, unfortunately, that's just how it proceeds, so...
So pretty much all of that is gonna rest on what conditions are applied at the city level, assuming an approval.
We'll have to make the case to the La Grange folks.
Okay. All right, commissioners, questions, discussion, motions? Ms. Kraus.
Regarding docket PZ-25-011, I move to approve the waiver because the regulations would create undue hardship, and this would improve the appearance of the areas testified. And then it would be on condition of the proposed conditions, the two, that it only be for this March 25 Planning Commission public hearing and the variance required by the City of La Grange before the building permit is issued.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Mr. Baxter.
Did you incorporate, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, did you incorporate the conditions of approval that they had?
Yes.
Okay, very good, then we have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis, thank you. Discussion? Yes, nobody wants to talk about it more? All right, we'll move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Marsh.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Kraus.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Walzer.
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edgar, and motion to approve waiver set forth in PZ-25-011 has been approved on a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. All right, what else we got?
So filing deadline's already passed, we do have a packed agenda next month as well. I can't afford lunch anymore for you all, so I'll pack like some brown bag lunches with bologna sandwiches, maybe peanut butter and jelly. I'll take your order next month, but, yeah, we do have a packed agenda, so same time, same place. That's it.
All right, anyone else? Go to the calls, stand adjourned.